I hereby call this meeting of the Norwood City Council to order. Please rise for the prayer, pledge allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, as a body we congregate in this council chamber, we pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Williams, please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Here.
Mr. Gabbard. Mr. Dracy.
Here.
Mr. Kelch.
Here.
Mr. Donardo.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Braden.
Here.
We have six members present tonight, one absent. Amendment, item E, amendment of agenda. We have a letter to add to communication, so that will be R. 2. May I have a motion to amend that? Mr. Donardo, motion by Mr. Donardo. May I have a second? Mr. Thompson, please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo. Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Item F, minutes of previous meeting, we don't have any to share this evening. That will move us on to requests to address council on agenda items. I don't have anyone that to wish to address the council on agenda items. Moving on to H, proclamation for Eagle Scout Tanner Leach. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. May I have Mr. Tanner and his mother-in-law to step up, please? And Scout Master Troy, if you want to step up too. You guys come over here, we'll get you right in front and center of the cameras, let's stay right in this area here, a little safe and distancing. Very pleased and very proud to have you here and be able to do this. This is my first proclamation as mayor, and it's a great honor to be doing it with the Leach family and of course Tanner, on such a great day. Whereas the mission of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the scout oath and law. And whereas the designation of Eagle Scout is the highest achievement in the Boy Scouting Program, which was founded over 100 years ago and only 4% of Boy Scouts are granted this distinguished rank. And whereas Tanner Leach is a member of Boy Scout Troop 9, has completed the requirements and was examined by the Eagle Scout Board of Review, which found him worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout on December 1st, 2019. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America encourages Eagle Scout candidates to complete worthy projects to improve their neighborhoods and their communities. And whereas Tanner Leach's Eagle Scout project included a musical instrument trial with fundraiser to give more students the opportunity to participate in Norwood schools band programs. And whereas Tanner Leach serving as an example to the youth of our community through his high level of personal achievement, leadership, and community service, and has made the city of Norwood very proud. Now therefore, I Victor Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Norwood, Ohio, do hereby declare June 27th, 2020 as Tanner Leach Day. Thank you, Mayor, for all. If you'd like to just, you got to speak loudly because we've got microphones, but Troy's the Scout Master of our Troop 9, Troop Year in Norwood.
Absolutely. Tanner, congratulations. We can't be more proud of you. You're a model and a representative of everything that scouting stands for. You're a good part of it. You can stick to the scout law at all times. I've seen you demonstrate leadership skills that are much beyond your age. So I congratulate you on your award, and we look forward to seeing what you're going to do in the future to help this city. Thank you.
That's a little ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Moving on to item I, reports of standing committees of council. Committee of the whole report. Committee report, committee of the whole, dated June 11th, 2020, to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio. We, your committee of the whole, to whom was referred the agenda Zoom presentation by Rita, the Regional Income Tax Agency, parade discussion, discussion regarding property owned by Sorda behind 4226 Montgomery Road, and update on report on accounting methods. Beg leave to submit the following report. Regarding Zoom presentation by Rita, Angela Vizi of Rita gave Zoom presentation to council and Mayor Schneider with Rita's full service tax collection program. Follow-up questions were asked by council of Mrs. Vizi. Additional questions by Mayor Schneider and Councilman Donardo were emailed to Mrs. Vizi. Evaluations by council will continue. Item 2, Norwood Day Parade and alternate parade ideas were discussed. Consensus by council to have an alternate parade was dismissed due to COVID-19 concerns. Councilman Thompson pointed out that the state of Ohio has prohibited parades due to COVID-19. Number 3, regarding property owned by Sorda located behind 4226 Montgomery Road was discussed by council. Mr. Dracy, as clerk of council, to send a letter to Law Director Mr. Keith Warren to review eminent domain procedure to secure property owned by Sorda behind properties at 4226 Montgomery Road and report back to council. Item 4, regarding update on report on accounting methods, President of Council Ken Miracle gave an update on the progress of the comments required to be completed by the city of Norwood. Council President Ken Miracle reported that comments assigned to auditor Mr. Stiff and President Mr. Muloney have been submitted to Anna Mary of the State Auditor's Office for review. Council President Miracle advised that this is a work in progress and work will continue to address all 34 items. Regular updates will be reported out. Respectfully submitted, Ken Miracle, Mr. Bunsel, Mr. Braden, Mr. Donardo, Mr. Gabbard, Mr. Dracy, Mr. Kelch, and Mr. Thompson. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we receive and file the report.
Motion by Mr. Bunsel to receive and file the report. Mr. Braden.
I second that.
Second by Mr. Braden to receive and file the report. Would like to add that Mr. Gabbard is here. Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown, please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Item J, City of Norwood Public Hearing, Notice of the Public Hearing on the 2021 Tax Audit. Notice is hereby given that on the 23rd day of June 2020 at 7:30 p.m., a public hearing will be held on the budget prepared by the City of Norwood of Hamilton County, Ohio, for the next succeeding fiscal year, ending December 31st, 2020. Such hearing will be held in Norwood High School gym, 2020 Sherman Avenue, Norwood, Ohio, 45212. I hereby call this public hearing to order. Do we have anyone that would like to speak regarding the notice of public hearing on the 2021 tax budget? Reverend Sonny James, please come forward, take your name and address.
Good evening. Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, Norwood, Ohio. First want to really commend the work that has gone in to even address some of the more sensitive in nature items that our city faces. And so the work that has gone into it, I would just want to say to any of our residents in Norwood, the only way that your voice can be heard is by your participation. And so when we see our elected officials working together to prepare documents that pretty much shape the future of issues that will affect all of us, we have to commend them and give honor to whom honor is due. And so I want to say, as we continue to move forward, one of the biggest challenges we want to keep on our minds is economic inclusion in everything that we do regarding our tax budget, regarding our revenue, regarding every aspect of our financial status. We've come a long way, and I think a lot of the residents recognize that. I think they see that we still have a long way to go, but I personally want to commend the efforts that have gone in to address. Many of you have just gotten here, gotten on board, but just dove right on in and, you know, address some real difficult issues that affect and shape the direction of our future. So on behalf of the residents, I would like to just say, good job, good job, good job, and keep up the good work as we continue to try to get this thing right. So, good job, guys, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Reverend James. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak? We have no other requests to speak, so I hereby close the public hearing on the 2021 tax budget. Moving forward. Item K, third readings of ordinances and resolutions, we currently don't have any. Item L, second reading of ordinances and resolutions, we don't have any receiving. Item M is introductory reading of ordinances and resolutions. Item M1, resolution adopting 2021 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Mr. Donardo. Motion by Mr. Donardo to have all three reads. Mr. Bunsel.
Second, please.
Second by Mr. Bunsel. Discussion. Mr. Donardo.
Yes, this was a discussion two meetings ago, when we were providing this particular date for the public hearing. I imagine the reason that the council budget didn't hear too much away from there is because the 2021 tax budget mirrors our plan, and that's intentional. It's going to be what we submit to the state. And it's exactly what our administration has documented by just, and that we all. That doesn't mean we're not going to be looking at a lot of the things that we talked about in the finance committee, particularly the revenues that, how COVID-19 and the rest that may have impacted that, and any changes that we make to that budget. That's probably didn't happen around the 2nd or 3rd of March of August. July period where we are to understand more fully, we heard that from Mr. Morgan. And then in August, I know that the mayor, the auditor, my colleague, Mr. Green, are going to be looking at our point of view.
I'm saying Patrick's Day.
Yeah, that means I'm going to kind of talk about it a little bit more, answer some of the questions a little less. Just wanted to clarify what effect like this is and how it's going to be different to the obvious review we promised.
Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Any further discussion? Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So yeah, standard practice, as Mr. Donardo said at this meeting, to get this passed. And I've reviewed it, everything looks good. The one thing I will note, it's kind of noted here, is that we are, at the end of this council term, we will officially not have any general fund bonds that will have to, remaining to pay off. Essentially, the city will be debt-free when it comes to bonds on our general fund. We still have taxing, financing districts and other places where there's bonds, but we won't have any bonds that we had used to help keep the city afloat, if you will, to pay back. So I think that the work of the last couple councils of this council, I think it should all be commended because previously, what might have happened is that the city might have just refinanced, you know, created a new bond or took out some more money to keep everything running. And instead, what happened was we cut expenses. And like I said, I think everybody should be commended on that, and it'll be exciting when this finally paid off. So glad that the tax budget reflects that that's going to plan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Mr. Dracy.
We have a better understanding of how what kind of impact it may have on the last couple months. No different than when we discussed it in the finance committee, I don't think there was. Essentially, a trigger put out, and the TV specifically was around the month of July. I think that's, next month can be pretty critical when we're understanding some of the major regular matters that slipped a little bit. Once that's understood, we'll do that formal review. He did say it's difficult to put numbers to these things without all, you know, information, but they're far all information. But we did discuss how we're probably in a slightly better position than the worst-case scenario is that we're, but it was just kind of like a tempered optimism, kind of like, let's see how this all shapes.
Any further comments, any further discussion? Mrs. Williams, please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. May we have all three readings? Mrs. Williams.
Resolution adopting 2021 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Resolution adopting 2021 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Resolution adopting 2021 budget and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the resolution be passed.
Motion by Mr. Bunsel, pass the resolution. Mr. Donardo, second by Mr. Donardo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Item M2, resolution affirming that funds from the Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund may be expended only to cover the cost of the city consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 USC 601d and any applicable regulations. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we have the first reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bunsel to have the first reading. Mr. Braden.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Braden to have the first reading. Any discussion? Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I speak maybe a little out of turn, but I would like to ask that the council pass this. The governor signed the bill. We are not able to receive any funds in regards to COVID relief unless we have this resolution in place. And that goes for the one about setting up the fund as well. But this is the bottom line thing. We have to pass this resolution that says, we're not going to spend money other than the way we're allowed to spend money under federal and state law, which I don't think is much of a stretch. So I'm going to ask the council pass this tonight.
Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. A question to the law director. Does this mean that we can't, that we can't be reimbursed for any funds? Like, we can't spend money now and then get reimbursed for it later if we don't pass this now? Is that your interpretation?
No, my understanding is that we are, a fund is, the way I understand it works is the feds send money to the state, the state sends money to the county, and the county sends money to cities, and then we draw on those from our funds to offset either past expenses related to COVID or going forward as we expend, we pull it out of the fund that we have. And we have until October, I think, to start sending money back, so.
We have to send it back.
Yeah, we have to start sending in October for anything we haven't encumbered, and then by the end of the year before, for anything we haven't actually spent under the previous encumbrances.
Did your hand raise, Mr. Bunsel?
So, yeah, I didn't realize it was such an urgency because the email that came out about this seemed that, it just came out, so I don't know how they're expecting all these local governments to pass it so quickly. However, I will defer to the law department and will amend my motion if the second is going to amend to have all three readings instead of the first reading.
Mr. Bunsel amends his motion to have all three readings. Mr. Braden.
Oh yeah, Mr. Moore, thank you for that explanation, and I will also rescind my motion.
So second by Mr. Braden to have all three readings this evening.
Thank you. It's fine, I did have a question.
Mr. Donardo.
Just to clarify, because I actually don't know if I understood the answer to that. Does that mean, couldn't we theoretically keep spending whatever we were going to spend and then get reimbursed later when funded? If we want, potentially, we could request reimbursement for expenses part of May, like last week, so two weeks from now, wouldn't that just be three weeks? I understand it's not that, it's just a timing thing I'm trying to get.
Mr. Moore.
That's my understanding, I mean, but again, as Mr. Bunsel mentioned, these things are fast-moving, and I have no idea what may happen. And so I just, we want to get, I'm just thinking, we want to get all of our ducks in a row as soon as we possibly can. I don't know if they might say, oh, you didn't pass that resolution, so, you know, I think Chevy, it needs its money more than you do. So I just, let's get all, let's get everything in place so we can start the process.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else? So the motion is to, by Mr. Bunsel, second by Mr. Braden, to have all three readings.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings, please?
Resolution affirming that funds from the Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund may be expended only to cover the costs of the city consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 USC 601 subsection D and any applicable regulations. Resolution affirming that funds from the Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund may be expended only to cover the costs of the city consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 USC 601 subsection D and any applicable regulations. Resolution affirming that funds from the Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund may be expended only to cover the costs of the city consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 USC 601 subsection D and any applicable regulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Do you have a motion, gentlemen? You may want to make a motion. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we pass the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Motion by Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson. Second. Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Item M3, ordinance creating and establishing Norwood Agency Fund 96, Norwood Coronavirus Relief Fund, and declaring emergency. Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since we did the three readings of the previous one, we probably should do, I'd like to make a motion that we do all three readings of this one as well.
Motion by Mr. Bunsel to have all three readings. Mr. Donardo, second by Mr. Donardo. Any discussion? Mr. Bunsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the way that our accounting system works, it's always kind of unfortunate when you have to create a new fund, especially with our current system that's limited to 99 or 100 funds. However, I think, I think the amount's like 300,000 or a little bit, maybe 400,000 for this coronavirus relief fund, so for 400,000, I think we can create a fund for that. So anyways, I'll be voting yes, but just want to note that having the funds does help to separate the money, and it'll mean that anybody that wants to look at these financial reports later, they can easily see Fund 96 and see exactly where that money went.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Anyone else? No further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings, please?
Ordinance creating and establishing Norwood Agency Fund 96, Norwood Coronavirus Relief Fund, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance creating and establishing Norwood Agency Fund 96, Norwood Coronavirus Relief Fund, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance creating and establishing Norwood Agency Fund 96, Norwood Coronavirus Relief Fund, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that the ordinance be passed.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Mr. Kelch. Second by Mr. Kelch. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item M4, ordinance honoring the memory of Lisa Tanner and naming the playground on Harris Avenue by Shea Stadium, the Lisa Tanner Memorial Park. Mr. Kelch. Motion by Mr. Kelch to have all three readings. May I have a second? Mr. Dracy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dracy. Any discussion? Mr. Kelch.
Uh, this park here is currently not named, it's taking about two minutes to find out.
Mr. Braden. That we refer to it as the.
Or the park from Harris Avenue next to Stadium, above top, bottom base won't do it, because it's not. As we know, we're renovating this park currently and turning it into a nicer park visit, when you kind of tangle it in, kind of a little above Shea Stadium and Barbers Park. And this is clearly the last step of the renovation process.
They might have to change the motion.
This project completely tied in. And it's a great opportunity to, like I said, name the park, acknowledge that.
Second, third, just by captioning.
A great memorial, we spent over 23 years serving the state of Rhode Island, the U T. Bill, diligently, spent a lot of time on the stadium with the Athletic Boosters. And I think from talking with family and friends, that this will be a great honor for you, for both of you, for this park, and be inspired by Lisa was and all that she had all. And I think by renaming this park, this standing word park, we could do a small gesture of kindness, permanently, to make sure that legacy lasts.
Any further comments? Mr. Kelch, would you like to amend your motion so that we can have the ordinance read in its entirety once? Like to have the whole reading, and then the second, third reading by caption?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy, would you make a motion? So the motion by Mr. Kelch is to have the first reading in its entirety, the second, third reading by caption, and Mr. Dracy, second motion. Any further discussion? Mrs. Williams. First reading in its entirety, second, third by caption.
Ordinance honoring the member of, excuse me, the memory of Lisa Tanner.
I think we need to vote on it first before we.
Forgive me, I was anxious to do it.
You're not, it's all right.
Yes, okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Absolutely.
All members present voting aye, Mr. Bunsel. Mrs. Williams.
All right, let's see if I can read it correctly this time. "Ordinance honoring the memory of Lisa Tanner and naming the playground on Harris Avenue by Shea Stadium, the Lisa Tanner Memorial Park. Whereas Lisa Tanner, also known as Dyer, was a lifelong resident of the city of Norwood and was extremely active in the community as a student athlete, mother, elementary school teacher, coach, and citizen. And whereas Lisa Tanner taught young children for over 23 years at Allison and Norwood View Elementary Schools. And whereas Lisa Tanner was an enormous part of Norwood Indian Nation, dedicating countless hours to Norwood's children as a member and vice president of Norwood Athletic Boosters, running concessions and helping other parents and families. And whereas Lisa Tanner passed away on December 14th of 2018 after a year-long battle with breast cancer. And whereas it is the hope of Norwood City Council that all children, parents, and loved ones who enter this park experience the love and joy Lisa Tanner gave to others throughout her life. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio." Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio. Section 1, that the playground on Harris Avenue in front of Shea Stadium, commonly referred to as the Tot Lot, shall henceforth be named the Lisa Tanner Memorial Park. Ordinance honoring the memory of Lisa Tanner and naming the playground on Harris Avenue by Shea Stadium, the Lisa Tanner Memorial Park. Ordinance honoring the memory of Lisa Tanner and naming the playground on Harris Avenue by Shea Stadium, the Lisa Tanner Memorial Park."
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Brayden to pass the ordinance. Mr. Kelsch.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelsch. Any further discussion? Please call the ball.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. The motion passes. Moving on to item M3, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I won't say it, because I'll just do it. A couple of good things going on in the city. Of course, the swimming pool has opened up, and everybody's really enjoying that, especially with this hot weather. I'm gonna go run and jump in that thing after this meeting. Okay, not really, but. Senior aerobics is going, so seniors being senior citizens, but senior aerobics are on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. On Monday and Wednesday, it is regulated, and they have a person that's running them. On Friday, it's sort of a free-for-all. We're having some good attendance, but if you have neighbors, friends, family that are seniors, and they want to go and take a dip, it's very easy to get in the swim pool. We have a nice ramp that they can get into. It's a great place to take a soak and meet some new friends. So, those start at 10:30 on those days, and they're really excited. I think the seniors are really excited. We have a huge pool. I don't know if you haven't been past our pool in a while, but it's Olympic-sized, so there's a lot of room to social distance, and it's a great facility for them to come together and take a soak. Repair work has started at City Hall on the roof, the gutter, we're having gutter work done right now, so that work's being done. There's roof work being completed on the firehouse that's had so many leaks for so many years. Some of the park signage is being upgraded, removing some of the old signs that, quite frankly, have been up there for 15 or almost 20 years. So, we're getting some of those signs replaced. If you've driven past any of the parks or any of the playground, or baseball fields, there's a lot of activity going on there, and Public Works is trying to stay up on top of that stuff. But it's tough, because there's a lot of people out there enjoying the sun, and, you know, they're staying away from each other, but it's great to see people out in the neighborhoods, continue to see just a ton of people walking through the neighborhoods, and so many really nice landscape improvements. There are so many beautiful yards out there, so continue enjoying that, because it seems like this is going to be the year for the award-winning yard. So, Public Works is busy. There's still a lot going on at City Hall. The new website will be launched here soon. I know that Tom has worked quite a bit on getting that together. I don't know if all of you have sent a better picture for the website, but the picture that's on there, you might want to send him a better picture. Take it, make a note of that, because I pulled, I'm the one who put the pictures on there. I pulled some good ones. They're good pictures, but you can, you might want to improve upon it, so please do send a picture to Tom if you have something that you want on the website. So, other than that, that's all I have. If you guys have a couple of quick questions, or if you don't have any questions, that's great. No questions, all right, thanks.
Mr. Gay.
That's a good try, though. Do you have an age on the senior aerobics, water aerobics?
We got by the Golden Buckeye Card, so how old do you have to be to get a Golden Buckeye Card?
I don't know, but...
60. So, you have to be 60.
I was hoping I'd be...
To qualify for an Ohio Buckeye Card, that's what we went by. Yes, Mr. ...
All right. Let's kind of, let's kind of hope and I can...
Get away from that. Get away from that.
And then, what was this last thing you just said?
Public Works is busy?
No.
Baseball fields are busy?
No.
We'll come back to him.
We'll come back. One try.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've noticed, driving by City Hall, that the fire department's being worked on. Can you give us an update on what's happening over there, maybe if you have anything, or...
The roof. They're working on the roof. They started, I don't know, two weeks ago, they started, and they're making good progress. It's a big project, because they're taking care of the flat part of it, and even all the different hip and slope parts are going to be taken care of. You know, when I first, when I first came on with the city, the first thing they did is said, "You need to come over here and take a look at the firehouse," because they could walk me around and show me eight, eight or nine different places where it's leaking currently, and then probably 10 or 12 different places where it leaked previously. So, it's time, and we're gonna get a, we're gonna get a good roof on that and go from there. Same thing for City Hall, they're working on the roof and trying to improve that.
That was my follow-up, because I know we talked about the gutters, and there were suit, you had, you had somebody tell you that the gutters weren't backing up, or maybe that was the cause of the leak, so, so, yeah, that's the, that's the update for City Hall too, then.
Yeah, we, the gutter systems, when that building was built in 1906, I think it's 1906, or somewhere around there, it's, that, that building had internal gutters, downspouts where it drained the roof in a different way. Some of those have failed, so they, you'll see there's exterior gutters on that, and there's box gutters up there. So, it's, it's a challenge without tearing apart the whole interior corners of every, every part of that. So, so that's one project that we are working on, and we hope to have taken care of, stopping any water from getting in, and then we're looking at some other improvements. I mean, clearly, we'd love to have the windows that they're putting in at Sharpsburg. If you look at that building, you know, it's, that Sharpsburg's such an old building, but the windows that they're doing there are fabulous, they're incredible-looking, and we'd like to replace the Norwood windows at the City Hall building. But, of course, we've got air conditioners sticking out of all the windows, so we've got to tackle that challenge also. So, there's, Mr. Murphy's making progress on that, but it's, it's a big hurdle, you know. It's one, you know how it is with these homes, everybody, we all live in older homes, it's, you scrape off one thing, and you find three other things you got to work on, so...
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Anyone else? Mr. Kelsch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there a multiple updates this evening at home and departments and this thing?
There is not. I know that the Safety Service Director's been working with JMA quite a bit here recently on a couple of different projects, and I know that they've had discussion, but I don't know whether we've been able to get some reports that are needed. But I will, when Mr. Murphy comes back in, I'll ask him about that, and we'll get, we'll get some information out to you on it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelsch. Mr. Gay.
I remember now, that's why I should be able to do the senior things, is my memory's not so good. The website, I was talking with Tom, and just so everybody knows, we're gonna be doing a few days, I'm gonna set up my little studio up there outside your office, and we're gonna do photos. Hopefully, we can do every city employee, so every department has professional photos that we can put on the website, so be looking forward to that coming up here soon. We'll probably pick, like, three days to give everybody opportunity to come through, and that way, we can get all the different departments and all the different employees through, and get nice photos that we can put on the webpage, so no one's embarrassed.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Sir, I would love for you to do a group photo of the police department and fire department, all of our, our police officers and firefighters. We've, if you look around in City Hall, there's some, some really nice ones from years back, but we haven't had a good photo in years, and it would be nice. And then council photos. I always feel like we should have a photo of each sitting council, you know, and that's something that we've, we haven't done, but we should have in council chambers, showing of all the different councilments, and since you're here, we could get some of that stuff done for free.
That's possible. I'm not saying it's...
Anyone else?
Mayor Schneider, may I ask one question? Would you please reiterate the social distancing policies we have at City Hall? Still wearing masks, and for you?
We're still requesting that people wear masks when they come into City Hall. If a person doesn't have a mask, it's, we're not, it's not that they're being escorted out. There are barriers in place, there are social queues, there are queues on the floor still where you're supposed to stand if you're going to queue up. We really haven't had a major problem with that. We haven't had a rush on City Hall and people trying to get in there for service. But we did put, you know, there are protective barriers up, and we are sort of limiting where people can stand at certain times, but the City Hall's open for business, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thinking for your report, Mayor Schneider. Moving on to item O, Other Requests to Address Council. I have several this evening. The first request to address council is Victor Orso. Please come forward. I can't, I'm sorry. Victoria?
Yes.
Forgive.
It's quite alright.
I think I'm due reading, but I want to sit right there. Just state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for allowing me to be here. My name is Victoria Sweeney Orso. I was raised here in Cincinnati, left and came back, and I live at 1030 Elm Park Drive in Paddock Hills. When I was a little girl, I was never allowed to come and play with my friends in Norwood. But yesterday, I came here for a meeting, and I have to tell you, it warmed my heart. Everybody was friendly, talking to each other, and just sharing, and I got to tell you, it works. It works. I don't think I'd ever been quite that happy, because I had friends when I was growing up, and I still have my same friends. And yesterday, at this meeting, I met the sweetest people, and we, our thoughts were the same. Of course, of course, you can see that I'm, I'm not a Caucasian, but a lot of my friends are, and yesterday, I made new friends, and I want to tell you, it was a wonderful thing. I left there in tears. I couldn't believe how awesome, how awesome it felt to be able to talk and just share how I feel, and let them share how they felt about all that's going on. You know, it's not for us to, you know, make a decision that could possibly harm someone, you know? Our best thing, I heard you pray, and I want you to know, I believed what you said. I believed it, and that is how I live my life, and I pray that you all do, and that Norwood is gonna be on the map, doing some great things for everybody that lives here. And now that I've, I've come back and I have been able to visit, I'll be back. I will be back to visit my friends, to make new friends, and to do what I did yesterday, is it made me cry. It felt so good. I got hugs. I got lots of support, and I just got to tell you, we need to do more of it. We really do. We need to do more. Sometimes it seems like it's hard, but it really isn't hard. It really isn't. But I wanted to let you know how wonderful it felt to be able to do that, and when I got home, my family members, like, "Where have you been?" And I said, "Making new friends," and they were like, "Well, can we go?" Well, I don't know, you know, if you want to, but I'm telling you, it was an awesome, awesome feeling. Awesome. All the people that I met, and all the people that I talked to. I met those two gentlemen, and they were talking to me. It was awesome. I just wanted to say that. You know, you all are in leadership, and you are the people that we look to for those serious decisions. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to come and just be able to speak and tell you how I felt yesterday. When I was a little girl, my father wouldn't let me come and play with my friends. Now, I can come and see my friends, and to me, that means everything. Everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Orso. Our next request is Christopher Taylor. Mr. Taylor, please state your name, address, and the address.
Christopher Taylor, 1946 Elm Avenue. I was at that same little get-together. Yeah, it was fun. Everybody showed up, even, I keep forgetting your name, and I can't read your name tags too far away.
You're good. You're good.
He showed up, yeah, we had Saint Claus here. Yeah, and I really enjoyed it, and, yeah, I got to meet people like her, and, yeah, I got to see him in person, yeah. And, yeah, I really enjoyed it. We need to do that a lot more often, and it'd be great if a lot more of you guys could come and join us with those mayor and all the rest of these. Yeah, that's pretty, yeah, short and sweet.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Our next request to speak, Dana.
Well, hello. My name is Dana James, and I live at 1832 Hopkins Avenue, and I attended the same meeting yesterday, and it taught me that the only way to change something is if you get a group of people together and speak your mind. Most people are scared to do that, but that taught me something yesterday, so, and, yeah, we need to do more of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. James, forgive me. Our next request, Yvonne Collins.
Yvonne's not here. She's here. Pastor Sonny James.
Greetings. Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue in beautiful Norwood, Ohio. Yesterday, we gathered at Victory Park for the beginning of many, 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 many more meetings to come. We came together, the heading that I gave it was "Hearing Every Perspective," and I mean to tell you, we even had a gentleman there that, you know, you see on TV where you, you hear about someone who's lost someone through a horrific act. Well, not only did this individual lose his daughter, but he also lost his son, and so he came and he expressed how angry he was, but by the end of the meeting, he came up to me and he said, "Pastor, I've got to tell you something." He says, "You guys got me in tears over here." And what I want to challenge us to do is to hear other perspectives. I want to challenge us as a body to come together and put aside some of our own agendas, some of the things that moving forward, when we have these, these meetings, which we are going to have twice a week, so that there's no excuse for anybody in Norwood not to be able to come. I thank God that our mayor reached out to me, Mr. Donardo reached out to me. Listen, everybody can't make every event. I get that, but it's awfully nice when someone takes time to at least acknowledge an email that's coming out, and then those of us that have had email issues, well, we'll address that, and we'll overcome that. Mr. Gabbard came out, and I addressed him not just as one of our city council members, some of the things that moving forward, when we have these, these meetings, which we are going to have twice a week, so that there's no excuse for anybody in Norwood not to be able to come. I thank God that our mayor reached out to me. Mr. Donato reached out to me. Listen, everybody can't make every event. I get that. But it's awfully nice when someone takes time to at least acknowledge an email that's coming out. And then those of us that have had email issues, well, we'll address that, and we'll overcome that. Mr. Gabbert came out, and I addressed him not just as one of our city council members, but I addressed him as a fellow Norwoodian, somebody that really cares. So, real quick, I just want to tell you some of the key points that I'm looking forward to accomplishing. The number one agenda item is more economic inclusion. If we don't bring everybody to the table with fairness, guys, we're going to just be headed down the wrong path. Channel Five came out yesterday and did a wonderful story on us. It aired at 11:00 PM. I was so proud of them. I believe they're coming back out this Friday. We will be out there again this Friday, June 26th, at Victory Park from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. We will turn around and come right back Tuesday evening at Victory Park from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. We were going to do Saturday, and then I realized, oops, I don't know how to read a calendar. That's the 4th. So, I know, and I don't want to interfere with that. So, we bumped it back to Monday, June, July 6th. Then we're going to come right back again on that Friday, July the 10th. I want to encourage you, come out, talk to your peers. If you are part of organizations, you're welcome. Come on in, and let's sit down. And you really have to begin to hear some of the horrific old stories to understand what's brewing some of the anger in people. But it proved one thing to me, that if we set aside our personal agendas and just meet each other where we are and stop handpicking who we support, stop showing up for your family and friends, and show up when people are just doing great things. And when folks come up with great ideas, well, don't sit on it, and then you come up with it later. I'm not, I'm not addressing this to anybody in particular. I'm just saying across the board, we've got to get everybody included and at the table. Real quick, I want us to be able to have an open door opportunity to bring more residents involved. And I know the police has a standard that, you know, sometimes you can't be on it if you have a felony or a background. Well, I think I pointed out at our first meeting, and I showed councilman Gabbert, we have several people that, I mean, well, they might not meet certain criteria, but I guarantee you, all of those individuals would really serve our community well. And so, a lot of times when people think I'm talking, they think I'm talking about promoting me. It's not about me. We're all Norwoodians together. I just happen to know a different breed of people that some of you don't bother to talk to, or don't know to talk to, or don't care to talk to, whatever. But I'm willing to get past that if we can come together and let go a lot of the old hurts and really come together. But it starts with you showing up. It starts with you returning an email. Now, listen, we are going to be reporting these things to voters simply because, as you all can see, you know, voters do make a difference here. And the voters have a right to know who's supporting the agendas that most affect them. And these issues affect all of us. So, I'm going to encourage you, this Friday, Victory Park, we're even going to throw out some hot dogs, and we're going to do some pop-up parties so people can come and just cut a rug, just dance with each other. So, come on out from 7:00 to 8:00 PM and just talk to somebody that has a different perspective. God bless you all. Again, if you need to reach me, pastorsonyjames@gmail.com, S-O-N-N-Y-J-A-M-E-S, or call me on my cell number, area code 513-487-8843. I'm open to everybody, and I pray you're open to everybody as well. God bless you, and I look forward to working with you all. Peace. Unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Pastor James. Thank you. Moving on to item P, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business this evening? Anyone? Okay, we don't have any unfinished business this evening. Let's move on to item Q, new business. Is there any new business this evening? Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to announce a streets, infrastructure committee meeting coming up soon and maybe get my fellow councilmen's input on maybe July the 8th, Wednesday, July the 8th, let's say 6:45. Is that okay? Maybe, maybe on the agenda so far, we'll go with traffic calming and any delays or shutdowns with, due to the shutdown with our streets that are planned, that are planned to be, to be scheduled repair. And maybe an update on ASH and Marion, and maybe a few other things that's going to be coming up in the next few days. And then I will email that to the rest of the county committee members. And if, if Wednesday the 8th at 6:45 is okay, that's what I like to schedule.
Mr. Braden, when you have that information, could you make sure you email that to?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other new business this evening? Mr. Thompson?
First, I'd like to put into housing committee. Recently, got something in the mail from a parent, Xavier parent, concerned about the number of tenants in rental properties for Xavier. Got a lot of documentation. I don't know if anybody else got this. It was, it seemed like a lot of people were, at least when I read it, a lot of people were, were sent one of these, but I'm not sure who got one. But anyways, very well researched. There's lots of documented ads of Xavier house renting for five and six bedrooms, when we've got the ordinance on the books that says you can't have more than four. And one thing, this Xavier parent, her child, what started this was she realized that there should only be four people in her child's house, and there was actually six. And so, she started taking in and doing the research. So, I can pass this on to the department or to the committee, the housing committee, to take a look at and see if they'd like to take any action towards it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Good. Mr. Gabbert?
If I could ask Mr. Thompson if you wouldn't mind maybe giving that to Laura or Maria and see if they couldn't scan it and send it out to all of us just so we can take a look at it?
Anyone else? Any further new business? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I would like to move that we move into executive session to consider a matter of public employee or official under ORC 121.22, and to also confer with an attorney concerning dispute involving the city council or the city and/or council that are the subject of pending or am in court action under ORC 121.22. I'm moving to go into executive session right now.
You're moving to go into executive session current?
Yes, right now.
Give me a second, I can, yeah, it's a motion. Give me a second.
Mr. Gabbert?
I'll make the second.
Mr. Gabbert, second. Any discussion?
Before we go, it's just a question to the law director, to the chair if I can. I mean, is there information that, that you have, Mr. Law Director, that wouldn't already be out in the public?
Well, I have, yeah, I have a host of information about different things that would not be in the public, so it depends on what you want to talk about.
Well, about the, about the subject matter, yeah. I appreciate the gravity.
Well, I'm just, there's, yeah, there's, there's a lot of stuff that, in theory, there's plenty of lawsuits, and there's, you know, plenty of employee matters to talk about if you want to, so.
Okay. Yeah, well, it sounds good, then.
Any further discussion? Are we just, Mr. Moore? Just go into executive session?
You have to make the vote.
You have to take a vote.
Yeah, we have to vote.
We have to vote, but we're going to go ahead and break. Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
I think, Mr. Braden, have a question?
Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just may clarify that when we go into executive session, what was the reason, again, I'm sorry, and then is that the only reason that we need to make sure that we're covered, that what we're talking about is covered here?
That's what I'm doing. I'm reading directly from the reasons that we're allowed to go into the executive session.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Under our council rules.
Okay.
To restate it, was to consider the matter of a public employee or official and to confer with an attorney concerning disputes involving the city or council.
Yes, sir.
That are the subject of pending or am in court action.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, would you do me a favor? What was the higher vice, was it 120?
121.22. They're both 121.22, different subsections, section one and section three.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy?
Yes.
Mr. Couch?
Yes.
Mr. Donato?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, bow your high. We are in executive session. Mr. Moore? Just go into executive session.
You have to make the vote.
You have to take a vote. But we're going to go ahead and break. Okay. Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
I think, Mr. Braden, have a question?
Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just may clarify that when we go into executive session, what was the reason, again, I'm sorry, and then is that the only reason that we need to make sure that we're covered, that what we're talking about is covered here?
That's what I'm doing. I'm reading directly from the reasons that we're allowed to go into the executive session.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Under our council rules.
Okay.
To restate it, was to consider the matter of a public employee or official and to confer with an attorney concerning disputes involving the city or council.
Yes, sir.
That are the subject of pending or am in court action.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, would you do me a favor? What was the higher vice, was it 120?
121.22. They're both 121.22, different subsections, section one and section three.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy?
Yes.
Mr. Couch?
Yes.
Mr. Donato?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, bow your high. We are in executive session. Mr. Moore? Just go into executive session.
You have to make the vote.
You have to take a vote. But we're going to go ahead and break. Okay. Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
I think, Mr. Braden, have a question?
Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just may clarify that when we go into executive session, what was the reason, again, I'm sorry, and then is that the only reason that we need to make sure that we're covered, that what we're talking about is covered here?
That's what I'm doing. I'm reading directly from the reasons that we're allowed to go into the executive session.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Under our council rules.
Okay.
To restate it, was to consider the matter of a public employee or official and to confer with an attorney concerning disputes involving the city or council.
Yes, sir.
That are the subject of pending or am in court action.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, would you do me a favor? What was the higher vice, was it 120?
121.22. They're both 121.22, different subsections, section one and section three.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy?
Yes.
Mr. Couch?
Yes.
Mr. Donato?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, bow your high. We are in executive session. Mr. Moore? Just go into executive session.
You have to make the vote.
You have to take a vote. But we're going to go ahead and break. Okay. Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
I think, Mr. Braden, have a question?
Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just may clarify that when we go into executive session, what was the reason, again, I'm sorry, and then is that the only reason that we need to make sure that we're covered, that what we're talking about is covered here?
That's what I'm doing. I'm reading directly from the reasons that we're allowed to go into the executive session.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Under our council rules.
Okay.
To restate it, was to consider the matter of a public employee or official and to confer with an attorney concerning disputes involving the city or council.
Yes, sir.
That are the subject of pending or am in court action.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, would you do me a favor? What was the higher vice, was it 120?
121.22. They're both 121.22, different subsections, section one and section three.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy?
Yes.
Mr. Couch?
Yes.
Mr. Donato?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, bow your high. We are in executive session. Mr. Moore? Just go into executive session.
You have to make the vote.
You have to take a vote. But we're going to go ahead and break. Okay. Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy?
Yes.
Mr. Couch?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All members present, bow your high. We are in executive session. Mr. Moore? Just go into executive session.
You have to make the vote.
You have to take a vote. But we're going to go ahead and break. Okay. Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy?
Yes.
Mr. Couch?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All members present, bow your high. We are in executive session. Mr. Moore? Just go into executive session.
You have to make the vote.
You have to take a vote. But we're going to go ahead and break. Okay. Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy?
Yes.
Mr. Couch?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All members present, bow your high.
We are in executive session. Mr. Moore? Just go into executive session.
You have to make the vote.
You have to take a vote. But we're going to go ahead and break. Okay. Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy?
Yes.
Mr. Couch?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All members present, bow your high.
We are in executive session. Mr. Moore? Just go into executive session.
You have to make the vote.
You have to take a vote. But we're going to go ahead and break. Okay. Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy?
Yes.
Mr. Couch?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All members present, bow your high.
We are in executive session. Mr. Moore? Just go into executive session.
You have to make the vote.
You have to take a vote. But we're going to go ahead and break. Okay. Mrs. Williams, please call the board.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Motion's go ahead and go.
We're out of executive session. Is there any other new business? Mr. Bunzl.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, sorry about that. That was our way to know where we're about from. So, some news came out, I think today or yesterday regarding, you know, another Norwood paper that is now not operating anymore. It came out that the Norwood Star is not going to operate anymore, that they're having declining revenue and, you know, I guess declining subscribership. But, you know, they've, it's been a really great, the Clark family has done an excellent job, you know, with getting that thing out and just getting information out. There's a lot of people that depend on that for their, some of the news that they get for Norwood. So, you know, I just want to express my, you know, regrets that that happened, but also my appreciation to the Clark family for all that they've done for having it as long as they did.
Thank you, Mr. Bunzl. Anyone else? Any further new business? Mr. Kelch.
I would like to have a plan to do that in a park committee tomorrow at 7:30, and it's going to be in council chambers. So, here.
Mr. Joyce.
I'd like to also remind everybody that we've got a thousand public health, or these thousand health and public safety committee tomorrow, 1 p.m.
1 p.m.?
Yes, in council chambers.
In council chambers. You say tomorrow?
Yes.
Anyone else? No further new business? We move on to communications. R1, letter from the treasurer's office. Mrs. Williams.
Letter dated June 10th, 2020 to Norwood City Council. Dear council members, attached are the bank reconciliations for January through May of 2020. If you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call. Sincerely, Timothy Maloney, Treasurer, City of Norwood.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. DiNardo. Motion received and filed by Mr. DiNardo. Mr. Thompson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunzl.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. Motion passes. Communications, R2, letter from Donna Lake, addressed to council. Mrs. Williams.
Letter addressed to Ken Miracle, President, Norwood City Council, from Donna M. Lake, dated June 22nd of 2020. Dear President Miracle and members of council, I would like to begin by making it clear that although I am an active and proud member of ASAP Norwood, I am writing this letter on my own and do not want it to reflect negatively on an organization that does remarkable work within the city of Norwood. However, the manner in which ASAP Norwood was talked about at the June 9th, 2020 council meeting could not be left on the record without a strong response. One member of council, while speaking in a disrespectful manner to a member of another local organization, made the following remark. "I don't want to go and see another ASAP Norwood situation where we have public land or public area being utilized without input from council or committees prior to anything being decided. Nothing could be further from the truth." The basketball courts at Waterworks Park have been in the planning stages for literally years. In fact, the students who questioned why the basketball courts were taken down, were all taken down, were in middle school when the process started. Those students graduated this year. All along the way, the previous administration and council committees have been involved in the process. The purchase order for $12,000, that was the city's contribution to the basketball courts, was approved and signed by Mayor Williams. Councilman Eric Thompson was involved from the beginning and a strong supporter of our efforts. Lieutenant Murphy from the Norwood Police Department is a member of ASAP Norwood. Both Norwood Police and Fire Charities contributed $2,500 each to make up a shortfall in funding. When the new administration took office, ASAP Norwood provided them information as to progress. And in January of this year, Dr. Lauren Bartoszak, resident and director of ASAP Norwood at the time, came to the Parks Recreation and Outdoor Spaces Committee to provide you input about the basketball court. I was asked to appear before the same committee in May and answer the questions that were posed about the process and selection of what was to be painted on the courts. At that time, I explained the involvement of several residents who were not members of ASAP Norwood in providing background information about Norwood to the creative group that would provide several designs for consideration. We were provided with several designs which were narrowed down to three. Our plan was to hold a public hearing to have public input on the final selection. That was not possible due to COVID-19. Instead, we utilized social media to gain the public's input. I told you that nearly 250 people voted on the design. They overwhelmingly chose the same design as the students at Norwood Middle and High School chose. Following my presentation at the committee meeting, we received an additional $500 in donations. The administration has been kept informed of timelines. Mr. Murphy and Mr. Zimmerman have been very responsive and supportive as we move forward. To say that council or committees were not informed is wrong and disingenuous. I would suggest that certain members of council familiarize themselves with Title VII of the Ohio Revised Code, specifically 731.05. It is not council's job to micromanage the day-to-day operations of the city. That authority rests with the administration. In spite of false accusations, ASAP Norwood will continue to work towards completion of this wonderful project that will be the envy of others and a place where Norwood youth can once again enjoy basketball. In the words of someone who watched the meeting, "We can't let negativity stop us from moving on. I'm so glad that we are working together to do good things for the city. So am I. Best regards, Donna M. Lake."
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bunzl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we receive and file this letter.
Mr. Gabbert.
Second.
Motion is took by Mr. Bunzl, second by Mr. Gabbert, to receive and file. Any discussion? Mr. Dracy.
First off, I appreciate the letter being sent to us. However, I understand that this has been in the works for years, and I understand that earlier we did have some special makes that Norwood basketball courts. I did ask several questions, however, designs did not come up, and I never knew of these designs prior to anything coming out. So, can we now and see these designs? This is why I asked Mrs. Lake where the designs came from, why we weren't involved with it, and I'm all about community support, community involvement, however, it also like we need to involve us as well. You know, it is still public land, it is still public property, and we, yes, we do have a say in public property. We have to look at it as we are now maintaining that property. We are now looking to, we have to repaint or, not repaint, repair the paint that is going to be put down. We have to put that into a parks budget in order to do that every year. We weren't given, we weren't given how much that might cost us each year or how much, you know... you know, an estimate of how much that would cost us. But if, if we have to do that work, and we have to put that money in, that was my questioning at the Parks Committee meeting, was why we weren't involved. If we have, if we have to spend money as a city to make sure that we keep all that paint looking brand, eventually it's going to fade. That was the whole question, that was the whole reasoning for my questioning at the Parks Committee. Okay? I, I understand we're not calling it out personally, but I'll, I'll say it maybe because everybody had to see the meeting, and that's fine. But my questions were because we were going to have to spend at some point city money on top of that $12,000 we did spend. And, you know, getting hit with a design right off the bat and out of the blue seemed kind of odd to me, since it is public land and it is part of parks. You know, I, I do appreciate the, the public input and the public involvement when we got the one. I have no problem with that. I would just like to know, you know, if public spaces are involved, that we at least stay in the loop a little bit more than we were. You know, may, maybe the last administration, the previous two, three councils or how, the councils or however many it's been since this has been going on, wasn't. However, when we came in, this project was close to already finished, and we, to me, I don't think we were given enough information as to what was going on with that, with basketball courts. So, because I asked a question, that's me being disingenuous and disrespectful, I, you know, I, I will disagree with that because I asked a question, and I did comment, and I did not like the courts. Everybody is entitled to an opinion, including myself. You know, I didn't like, I didn't like this design. I didn't like any of the three designs, to be honest. But I have to accept at this point which design it is. Now, again, I'm not sure when it comes to a point that me asking a question is disrespectful and disingenuous, but that's her opinion, and that's, you know, I gotta take that into account, I guess, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I was, I was at the meeting, and I, I just wanted to follow up the, when we were involved in the last couple of years doing this, part of the discussion, not just the $12,000 that the city contributed to the project, but there was the discussion of understanding that the city in repairing these courts was taking on the maintenance of these courts the same way that if we fixed up a park, that the city is taking on the maintenance of that park. So that was, at the time, factored in, and I realize you weren't part of that discussion, but that was, that was factored in. As far as the paint fading is actually going to be below a layer of sealant, so hopefully that will keep the paint from, from chipping, or if, if the paint's chipping, it's because the whole sealant of the court is failing, and that's a bad thing. And so I, I think we'll be okay for a while with that. So, like, I, I, I kind of understand your frustration and not being in the loop. You're coming in at the last five minutes of a 24-hour project. There wasn't a whole lot of loop to bring anybody in at, at this point. It was just sort of like, this is happening if I didn't do a good job of letting you all know what was happening prior. I'm sorry for that. We did have them come in and talk about it, though. So, I'm, I'm just excited to have basketball hoops in court for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Kelch.
Thank you. Again, to, to kind of respond to Mr. Thompson, you know, I thought I could have asked him a little past, uh, Parks, we shared, kind of what was going on there. They did come in earlier, attended here to kind of give us an update, which there wasn't much of an update on, other than what, kind of everybody had come in already. And kind of Mr. Thompson had come in last five minutes of the 24-hour, kind of dealing, kind of, you know, there, and all of a sudden, it turned into a really rough time with health and stuff, so there was kind of a lot of, not knowing what was going on. Being new council, being often being largely new committee, we wanted to know, and we asked those questions. And, and that's something we're going to continue to do, ongoing, as long as I'm the head of the Parks Committee, whoever, May I'm on. Anytime it comes, somebody wanting to help their use of land or something like that, but we're going to ask those questions. Because that's our job, that's what we're going to do. We, we do have, I hear people out there, and people ask, hey, this is how the city needs to be, wants to see it, and that's fine. I can never see a problem, disagree with anybody, I'm pretty sure, I disagree with everybody, just group of one, one another, and a family of them. To me, that's kind of redundant, as long as it's not a seizure to try by nature. But that's something that we're going to continue to do. We're not just going to say, yeah, that sounds great, we're gonna do it. Though we might end up doing it, like, we're going, we're gonna ask those questions, we might question someone in the process and think of that. Those bringing these projects to us and working with, you know, we need to do better work together, so. And that's something that I would do, reaching out to them to try to, you know, better build that bridge together, as I can work with ASAP North, along with yourself and Mr. Miracle. You can do a four by four, they can help us see what parks need more now versus later, trying to have it organized, and it's, it's gonna be a big deal, not just for this council, but future councils, because this is gonna be a overnight thing, fixing everything for the park in Norwood. So working together, there's so many groups that are gonna be able to find money for us, or have people plan when we can, or we're too busy doing other things, it's gonna be important. So I'll do a better job reaching out and working better with them than I imagine, but it needs to be done, and we're going to ask those questions. We're not always going to agree, and that's perfectly okay. There's nothing wrong with that. It creates more thought, they want it, and we're here to give results out, and that's the first point. I don't imagine anybody's gonna agree, everything I have to say, and that's okay. So we can understand that as well, and I think here in this instance, it's more of a liberty issue than a message issue, but we're gonna work to do better.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Bonsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I kind of object to some of the history revision that's happening right now by some of the council members that spoke before me. So first, I just want to say that whether the previous council member, you know, knew of the designs or not, or what have you, or liked or not, it's the city administration that, that decides. They're the ones that are going to make the ultimate decision whether that goes down on the courts or not. If the city administration wants to give power to, or give, you know, the authority to the Parks Committee to decide the design, I guess they could, but that's, that's not inherent in any council committee. We appropriate funds. Now, sure, we can review things, we can ask questions, but, you know, it was said by a previous council member that the issue was just the maintenance, and that's not what the issue was. I've watched that committee meeting. The issue was about the design, and it was a lot of very derogatory comments about the design. And to me, you know, with Donna Lake there, I mean, Donna Lake was almost in tears at that meeting. I mean, it's very frustrating for me to watch because that person is also a representative of the body that I sit on. So I think that we just need to learn, I think we really need to work on our communication because, again, it can, it can, the perception is out there that you really can't do anything good enough, Mr. Chair, because there's always going to be people that are going to speak out against it. And, you know, these basketball courts are for the children, they're for the kids, they're for the teenagers. They're the ones that decided, and the teenagers are the ones that actually spoke up and helped to get this ball rolling in the first place. And so I'm happy that the, the vote that went on confirmed the choice that the teenagers and the, the high school students made. And I also just want to ask that we, as a council, we work on how we communicate to the public because we're getting paid to sit here and do this job, and we signed up to do it. There's people out there that are volunteering, and they're putting so much effort to try to improve this city, and they're doing it all out of the good of their heart, and just because they want to see the city a better place. So, Mr. Chair, I would just ask that we, just as a council, try to work together and try to, try to work on how we communicate with the public and, and honestly, like, embrace ideas that maybe we don't, we originally don't like, and I, I think that we can do better, so I just want to ask that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsel. Anyone else? Mr. Brayden.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, I, I want to just make sure we understand, this letter's coming from a lady who's a longtime, good-standing member of this committee, this, this, this body. I, I wouldn't be so quick to dismiss this type of letter with just, you know, like, she's questioning, you asking questions and things like that, or, or, I would not be so quick to dismiss the knowledge and the, the insight that Ms. Lake has when it comes to this council and our decisions and our day-to-day actions. So I would just say that there's probably more to this, behind this than just this issue, and before I dismissed anything in this letter, I would just, just really consider what she's saying and why she's saying it, and maybe just reflect on that a little bit, and as well as we all can communicate and, and do better every day, it's, it's about myself and, and others doing better. So just reflect on what she's saying in this letter, and, and I think there's an underlying message to this in the way we can, we can treat each other and act. So she's, she's pretty, she's a pretty knowledgeable woman, and I would just be real careful about dismissing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair. I just wanted to just emphasize that it wasn't about what happened at the committee meeting itself, it was about the comment that was made at the last council meeting after the person had already been informed of all of the public input that went in saying that I don't want to go see another ASAP Norwood situation. And again, that's the part where I think the, the biggest frustration is. Like, it's fine if, you know, we make a mistake and we learn from it, whatever, but once somebody, once we learn, we can't bring it up and go blame an organization for something that they're literally just trying to improve the city, so just want to make sure that was known.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsel. Anyone else? Please hold.
Mr. Bonsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
I lost track. What are we voting on?
To receive and file.
To receive and file. Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, motion passes. Item S, excuse absent members, everyone's present. Item T, adjourned. Mr. Dracy. Motion to be adjourned by Mr. Dracy, second by Mr. Bonsel. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonsel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, we are adjourned.